Building that we do that we'd want to visit, right? And isn't it kind of an ag building?
Yep.
So it might be nicer to do that when it's on.
And that's fine. That's why we wanted to put it out there.
I guess I would have them come in earlier. This time of year is so cold crappy. Nobody wants to go outside and do anything in February.
Okay.
And if they do come here, have them early in the meeting so they don't have to stay.
They would come at six.
Yeah.
Yeah, they would come at six.
Oh, gotcha. Before.
And Michelle and I are having conversations about if we have to have exec session. Do we start with us at five thirty? Or do we start with us at six and have Kings Valley come in at six thirty and have our regular board meetings start once they're done? Knowing that it might be a little after seven. So we just don't know enough about what could crop up for any kind of an executive session need on the thirteenth. There may be none.
Yeah, any of those are fine with me. I could do executive session after the main regular meeting. We've occasionally done that. It's not very common.
My preference is the longer, fewer days, more time one day. So I would prefer longer.
Agreed. Totally agree.
And that's fine. We'll just go ahead and make that happen. So.
Okay.
But I'd like to see their school. I just want to see it in the summer when we can see it.
No, and that's, I think that's a very valid, yeah.
And they also. They know that they can record and post their meetings later if they're not able to stream them, right? That's covered under the law for smaller schools with their meetings. We might just double check that they're aware that that's how the law with the new rule was written. That if they don't have wifi bandwidth or streaming capability with their internet connection, that they can record and post it later.
And Michelle's been working with them and with OSBA to be able to make sure that they have all the things they need. I think one of the things that they were looking for was who could do it for them. And they're getting into the place of where can they have student support to be able to do the recordings and where do they not want students present in a meeting setting to be able to do recordings. I mean, so they're just trying to figure out the ropes. But yeah, that's kind of where they are. And I think your point is well taken, Ryan, in being able to say, let's go out there when the days are longer and the weather's nicer. I think that just makes sense.
Then you can really look around.
Yeah, we just kind of thought we'd take care of two things at once. And but your suggestion makes a whole lot more sense.
All right. And then the next item is the PM traffic patterns, which you sent us an email about.
I did. I did. And I sent an email to the Corvallis High School swim team who was practicing here in the evenings. And I think it took me three times to get it right, to give them the right directions about how to get out of here after eight o'clock. And it was just kind of like, how directionally challenged can I be? Because I did it the first time and sent it and I thought, this is great. And then I looked at it and I went, what? So third time was a charm. I got it out to them. But if we're here beyond eight o'clock, they're starting to do the shutdowns this week and next week of nineteenth between Applegate and Main. Main will remain open, but the intersection at nineteenth is not. And so it's just planning accordingly with whatever direction you need to go. You know, for instance, normally I would leave and head out and, you know, turn onto Applegate and go down nineteenth. Can't do that tonight, so.
Right here, this crossroad right here, are you a long turn left on the highway or are they barricaded?
No, you have to go, they have right turn only signs, which I had said left. That was one of my big mistakes. You have to almost, you have to go down like the twenty-sixth before it'll let you actually make a left-hand turn.
Yeah, I think it's like all the way down to the weigh station.
Yeah, so I had told them in the directions if you're going, because we were talking about bus routes too. If we have anybody that comes from the west that's here for an athletic event or something like that. If they're heading back west, then they've got to figure out how they're going to get through. And it's either going out to Chapel and cutting back in, or it's going down to twenty-sixth and then making.
Oh, so it is open. You can turn and go to Chapel.
You have to kind of take the fire lane.
Oh, you have to go right here.
I was gonna say, can we go fire?
Okay, I'll stick to the roads closed, but yeah, you could go right here.
Where they're working right now, yeah, you can go around Clemmons and then.
Well, that's easy. Yes, you just go to the middle school right here and then Chapel. Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So it was just, you know, putting things out there, but just wanted to let us know that we're late. We're one of those things that's in the same boat, so.
All right. Well, thank you for making sure that the Corvallis High School had that information also, because I.
It just took a while to get it right.
That would have fallen off of my right hand.
Well, you mentioned that swimming, so I don't really know this, but the aquatic center is shut down for repairs or permanently?
Right now for repairs. They've had somebody come in and do their study is my understanding. I haven't heard the results of that study, but I've heard that they're in conversation about what comes next.
So does the Corvallis, are they paying to use the Clemmons School? Or is the form that is allowing them to use?
They're paying us to use.
So is that helping? I know the pool has been a big deficit.
Yep, yep.
So is that amount enough to help or make a difference, or is it just something?
No, we made sure that it covered our staffing needs and worked with Corvallis. And so it's taking care of their time there and the additional staff that we have to provide.
But does it help with any of the maintenance?
The chemicals and the cleanup and all those kinds of things.
So it's helping the district to maintain that pool?
Yep, yeah. We didn't, we intentionally couldn't undercut. And it's the same thing we're looking at with the people who are just coming from, you know, lap swimming and things like that. To make sure that it's not going to be incumbent on us to pay the long-term bill. Because Corvallis Parks and Rec right now is waiting to kind of see what's up. And we've had no further conversation with them about any kinds of agreements to take over programs. And so, but if that becomes a detriment financially to us, that's what we're looking at. So that we don't get in a position of we're taking on all their lap swimmers, but we're not making enough to cover our bases.
Well, I'm thinking the other way. Is this a better program long-term to help keep the pool here? Trying to keep them here, does that help keep, is it making enough to make a difference? Because as I, we heard a year ago, and I haven't seen the numbers yet, but the pool was a big drain.
Yep.
So is trying to entice somebody to stay here, bringing enough money to help?
And what we're looking at right now is what is coming in in terms of memberships or daily rates versus what it is that's costing us to increase staff. So we're doing a constant look at that to be able to see what any net gain or loss could be. But yeah, there could be benefit and we're getting more and more people who are choosing to come over the longer that Osborne is shut down.
Just based on maintenance and stuff, and my, you know, just recollection of the last forty years here in the district is that we're probably still going to be losing money on that pool unless we do something with the city for a recreation district or get a major, you know, donation come in or something like that. I mean, the pool is just, unless something radical is done to rebuild it, whatever, you know, with like some huge donation or something like that. My guess is it's just going to constantly be a lot of money loser until, because if we decommission it, then it's a whole nother set of expenses. It's hugely expensive to decommission a pool like that.
Remember the outdoor pool at CHS?
I didn't go to school here.
No, it's Corvallis High.
Yeah.
I thought you went to.
No.
So the outdoor pool there, they took out my freshman year. The seniors ripped down the fence and they had their cars in there racing around it pointing the pool because it was getting filled in, but they tore down the fence and just.
Here we go.
Yeah, there's one more layer of having other people using the pool and that's balancing, you know, the parking, our activities, all that stuff too. So it's not just the financial.
No, and that's, you know, we're watching those kinds of things and, you know, doing our best to take a look at that and what that means. But it's definitely been a learning experience and Eugenia at the pool has just been spot on in terms of giving me any kind of data or information I need, want.
Yeah, her presentation was super helpful.
To be able to see what's there. So, and Corvallis High School is exceedingly appreciative of the opportunity to be able to be here.
And they've been real cooperative with everything, right?
Very much so.
Yeah, because they want it so bad.
Yeah.
Moving on to reports, we have student data, facilities data, and then board liaison information.
Yeah, I wanted to bring some things forward and that will seep over into some board goals, but I wanted to provide just some general information. One of the things as we look at goals, as we look at data, and you had seen before the information about the race and ethnicity breakdown by school. And we didn't go as far as grade or anything else like that yet, but there's some places. And so the other thing I asked Michelle to take a look at is, so what is our breakdown via gender? And so she put that in there. And then it's kind of like, okay, so what is our breakdown based on students who are receiving special ed service or five oh four? What are, I think you said, Michelle, thirty-six homeless students across the district? So for sixteen hundred students, we're thirty-six, which some people would think that that's really small and some people would say, you're kidding me. We got thirty-six people, students that qualify? So it's those kinds of things that I just wanted to put a tickle on some of the information that I believe will help us know the district better as we continue to look at information. So that was just the start. The next page in there, Ryan, you'll be happy.
Well, this, before you move on, I'm just looking at something which is a stereotype that probably isn't correct, but I would assume that more high school males drop out than females?
Not necessarily so.
Because as I'm looking at, at the middle school, there's eight number difference. And then the high school is twenty-six different? And I'm just thinking in terms of what I remember from high school is most of the girls finished and the boys were the ones likely to. And I was wondering if that was a trend here or not, or if that's just, it just happened to be there's eight differences in middle school, twenty-six different high school.
Yeah, and the thing that I also like to look at is I'd like to go back to what was flowing at the Academy last year and what is it this year? To see about number of students who have moved. So ideally, when you can see it by grade level, it makes a big difference.
Yeah.
Because we could have had a group that graduated that had more males than females. And I looked at the, right now, we're not too bad.
But in general, you would think it's not a correct statement that it's not.
Right, no.
Okay, I would.
There might be a few more, but it's not anything significant.
Okay, I would, I would just, I wouldn't have not have been surprised to find out that the.
Yeah, it depends on year to year. Like my class was probably maybe similar years when I graduated. Way more, we had way more boys that dropped out or went for GEDs than graduated.
But that's, that's, your question is the kind of thing that is, that's what I'm hopeful, is that the data prompts the questions in terms of what we're looking at and what we need. So it just was a taste.
Does our student data system allow for expansion beyond the binary for gender?
Yeah, we had, we talked about that today.
Seven.
Yeah, we talked about that. We had, yeah, seven total in the district students who qualify as non-binary.
Okay, yeah.
And we didn't put it by school because the numbers would have been so low that we didn't want to do any personally identifiable possibilities. So they all would have been NAs. But it does that.
So our most gender students are falling under their gender preference in here as well, correct?
Yes, yeah. If they're reported, if they're reported as not, if the report comes in and they're noted as non-binary, then they're noted as non-binary.
Thank you.
And working it through that way.
I appreciate that it's aggregated, de-aggregated?
Disaggregated.
Disidentified, de-identified. I can't, the brain, the brain might not be here.
Yeah, there's just some places like that that we just have to be cautious about how we share data.
Absolutely.
We've really talked about that, because there are some places that.
Small districts that have small enough numbers, when you start subcategorizing and subcategorizing, they'll say, oh yeah, I know who that is.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Okay, facilities.
And Joey, if you're listening, thank you for making it simple and only a couple pages that I can look at, not seventy.
So we talked to Joey, Jennifer and I met with Joey yesterday, and he had this stuff. And so we said, put it into a document and let's take a look at it. And then we're going to work on, you know, what are priority A, priority B? When something moves into an actionable item versus a gee, wouldn't it be nice? That we have a little bit more fluid system for being able to track that information. But knew that this had been a request and this is also a piece of the puzzle. It's a piece of the puzzle because of what we need to look at from a financial perspective for our facilities. We're doing the same next week with technology to be able to take a look at that. But then the other thing that we have to look at that I want to keep at the forefront of our planning is we can bond again, not until two thousand thirty, but that's tomorrow. And so if we don't start thinking about now and starting to plan for what our hope or intention would be and getting input, we're going to find ourselves with no plan for what we want to have done.
But that falls in very nicely with the strategic plan.
Yep, yep. And that's why I wanted to, I brought this forward for multiple reasons, because that's a piece of the puzzle.
Five years plan beyond this sort of typical long-range plan.
Yeah, so for instance, one of the things that we've talked about is we don't want to, if we were to think about requesting the construction of a school, regardless of what school that is, do we want to spend the next five years putting lots of money into that school for facilities repairs? I mean, we want to keep it functional and safe for students. But is now the time to be starting to think about what makes some sense so that we're not hurting ourselves in the long run?
Well, that brings, my first glance at this is my, I argued my math. I first looked at this, I looked at budget, went, okay, we're working forty thousand dollars, I'm getting thirty-two students. That comes out at twelve fifty per student. Just, I look at these things going, okay.
Yep.
And if we were, and as much as a small school, I'm sure it is, I'm not an educator, but I can almost promise that more one-on-one help is better for those students. But thirty-two students needing an large dollar, and I'm going to push the vocation all the time versus a shop class that could benefit multiple high school classes over and over and over. I'm going to have a hard time saying we should put forty grand in the budget for thirty-two students if, and I just, I was still on the first page, but I just looked at these numbers immediately, went back to this page and did the math going, that's twelve hundred fifty. And I know it's not, it's not a one-time thing, these are multi-year things, but still.
Oh, no.
When you look at numbers, you're going, twelve hundred fifty dollars a student, we're looking at forty thousand for thirty-two students in the school.
Yeah, and we've always talked about we get a little bit of small world school money to be able to support budget. And the constant question has always been, at what point does that smaller, smaller school funding not, not make up a difference in terms of being able to take that twelve fifty down?
And what, budget is what grade to get, that's just.
K-four.
K to four. So if you divided thirty-two students across, that's five grades.
Yep.
So you'd be, in essence, you're talking about seven. So, and per grade, it's pretty hard to justify, in my mind, it's really hard to justify. So there's a lot of operating costs at budget. So when we, and again, I'm just thinking, not knowing other numbers, but it's, we just gave up renting one farm for my small numbers, is small rent, but the time it takes to operate it is not worth it. We could take those fifteen cows, divide them across our fields over four hundred and never know we had two more cows in each field.
Right.
So I look at this as that same thing going, it's a great little community thing, but at some point, if it's costing two hundred thousand operated each year for staff, maintenance, facilities.
And what's the land value if you have to pay for something else?
Well, that's been some constant conversation about what would, what would happen. When we were down to twenty-two students during COVID, we actually brought third and fourth grade in to do learning with a teacher in here. I mean, nobody was on site per se, but that's what we did. And at that point, we almost started engaging in conversations with the community and with the Blodgett Summit Community Club about what's going to happen if we. And we never got there because their enrollment climbed back up again. But it's those kinds of things that we also take a look at in relation to also, do we want kinders riding the bus an hour and a half or an hour each way every day? So, you know, it's kind of like.
But the kindergarten class is four or something.
Right, but it's, but it's still kind of like, how important is that or is that not? And those are the conversations, but yeah.
Does the bus, the bus, people, the bus goes out there regardless because they don't have to go to the budget if you live out there. Does the Ford bus go out there either way? So there's no more additional. So as we get through this, a board goal is, I would like to, as a board, we figure out what that breaking point number is.
Yep.
As part of our planning and the goal is, we need to say, here's a, you know, here's a number that we need to look at. Here's what is costing us. And it's not favoritism, but when you get to a point of a few students, you're favoritizing a few to hurt the rest. And I would love to, if we had small schools, but we're not there.
Right, and it's like, what is that point? You're spot on.
We're to a point that when I look at these numbers, Clemmons, hundred sixty-six, three sixty-eight, seventy-four at the academy. You look down the list and when we're talking about the hundreds and then thirty-two, all of a sudden we're going, well, we know.
Well, at some point, at some point, I don't know how long it goes, but the same thing happened with Kings Valley. Kings Valley used to be just one of our rural schools.
Right.
And then it ultimately transitioned over to a charter school. And it's no longer directly, I mean, we still, we still oversee it, but it's, you know, and that potentially, you know, could happen in budget.
Yeah.
Columbus owns the budget school.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Thompson Timber Museum, we need to sell Thompson Timber, the ground, and the Thompson Timber Museum.
There you go. I would also be curious as part of this to see where the forecasted class sizes are for budget, considering we know this next year's kindergarten class is going to be rather small and the year after for sure. And what that's going to do out in budget, which is even smaller.
Yeah, and we, we watch that all the time to be able to see what makes the most sense in terms of what we're doing.
Yeah, as we've got our twenty-twenty and our twenty-twenty-one babies and we know the birth rates were incredibly low those two years.
And we have some kids from in town that go out there. Not many, but we have a few.
Okay.
And so, you know, it just, but what, what you're talking about and what you're asking raises some of the things that are important in terms of what are all the things that need to be considered in making a decision of facility, school, whatever? That when you have data and information, then we can have conversations that help.
Yeah.
And then also you've got to keep in mind how much rural school stimulus money or whatever that we lose if we close budget. Because there, because doesn't budget get more per student than?
Yeah, they get, they get additional money as a small rural school. But then, you know, Ryan's right, when you talk about what's the breaking point?
Right, sure.
That allows us to be able to take a look.
Well, and the busing issue, I'm not sure how many of those kids, those kids are actually riding a bus? Or are they out there anyway and they're getting driven to school? I don't know if the kids riding a bus an hour each way is actually a thing.
Well, most are, most are riding buses out there.
If they were, but we're talking about the kids at budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if, if budget wasn't there, they ride an hour to get here.
Oh.
Yeah, that's.
Except that's not quite right because we were the last stop on the route. They went out to budget where everybody could, and then back. My kids, it was not that long.
Yeah, and it just all depends, yeah. But, you know, it's all those things that are the great questions to be asked.
The other question, which is probably not appropriate to ask, maybe it is, is budget a higher percentage of homelessness? Or is that not, I'm just thinking as you get farther out, lower.
I bet not.
So, because so it won't be hurting. I mean, I just want to make sure we weren't taking some kids that were already on the extreme struggling end.
Right.
So, okay.
Do they have a common percentage of sped kids there? I mean, is that, does it?
It fluctuates a little bit and it's typically not very large. We do have a few more out there right now. The other thing to look at would be numbers that, well, and right now, everybody's eating free, so it, you know, but, you know, what about just food insecurity in general and some things like that? So, but they're all great questions to be able to raise and take a look at.
One thing about eating free, I know we're getting off topic here, but eating free, so our kids come to school with a lunch, but eating free, they socialize more. They want to get to school early because they can run in. And elementary and middle school, it's great that they're not on their damn phones. So it's, the free lunches have provided more of a social environment for these kids. Where before, the kids, we'd drop them off in the classroom. Now they want to get here early so they can go and get their.
Get something to eat.
Just to hang out with their friends.
Yep.
Right, it's a social, it's a social thing too.
Where so many people now are stuck staring at their phone. It's nice that these kids want to race to school.
Just to hang out with each other.
Just to hang out with their buddies. Yep, yep. All right.
Are we going through this one or are we just reading through it on our, are we just taking a moment? Are we going to go?
We're not going to go through it step by step. What I wanted to do was lay out some of the information inclusive of our target really tonight, or the intent was to look at the development of our board goals. But I wanted to do some data points first. And we can go back and take a look at wherever we want to, because this is really your meeting. What I wanted to do was put together some information to help kind of inform some direction.
And what I would do with, go ahead.
I was just going to say one last just comment or question about the pool is if you read, I don't know if you read through the pool stuff yet.
Got it, yeah.
But the fact that it's ultimately, if we want to keep it running, we're grandfathered in to a point. Meaning we, we don't have to spend as much and we, but if we were to completely decommission it and decide to replace it, put a new pool in, it wouldn't work. Or we would have to put it somewhere else, because we don't have, for example, it's not in a parking space to support the pool as it is currently. Except for the fact that we're grandfathered in, because it's been here since the fifties or whenever it was put in.
Yeah, I can't remember the date off the top of my head.
You've mentioned the number, two million dollars could exceed two million to potentially repair it and put it into proper, you know, long-term. You know, keep it going for another, what, fifteen, twenty years or whatever.
We did have a meeting in November, November with, it was November, with city, county, our pool, Osborne, Parks and Rec, just to be able to say, we've talked about a Parks and Rec district or something like that, where are we? And the group would like to get back together again now that the first of the year has hit. But it's kind of like, how do we start? If we really want to, we've been in the conversations for a couple of years of should we or should we not? And so it was finally saying, we've got to get a meeting together and kick things off in terms of conversation. And really, ultimately, what we need to do here is survey of community. Do you want it? Do you not? Would you be willing to pay for it? And would you be, I mean, it's that kind of stuff that we have to get the information to know where we're going, so.
And I'm not familiar with bond stuff, but I see where Joey's making notes here. Potential bond, there's a no note next to two million for the pool. Is that something that could be, I guess, can you really quickly explain to me? I understand the bond is, money is voted on by the voters. Money you put out there, we want to do this for the school and the new taxes go by this, that, that's.
Yep.
So if prior to, if by next year, or whenever we start engaging the public in discussions on a strategic plan, that's going to help drive what we can ask for in the bond based on what we get from the community is some input, is that?
Yeah, that, and that will be.
That's how I envision our strategic plan working.
Yes.
So we can find out from the community how important a pool is from some public meetings, some level of outreach to find out.
Yes.
So some of these things Joey has here, like all involved in middle school, it basically says, well, we need to replace it. Let's not put, in simple terms, we need to replace it, be careful what we put into middle school, next buying opportunity.
Because the middle school's pushing fifty years old, but was it early, mid-seventies, something like that?
Yeah, something like that.
But if there's a, if there's a looking to push the middle school, does the pool maybe go into a middle school package? Versus a high school if we're going to build a whole new school in a bond?
And the struggle that we have with that is we've got to take a look at what are people willing to pay?
Yeah.
And what we struggle with from a school district budget in part is the pool pays for a little bit for our students, but it really is not for our students as a community pool. So do we want as a district to continue to maintain the oversight of a community pool? And the answer to that is probably not the best thing for us to do.
So like the Frogger grounds having a community pool there, is it better?
Well, and if there's a Parks and Recreation District or something through the city or pool district, then that district takes on the leadership and the oversight where the district doesn't need to. The district can help put some money toward it to be able to allow our kids for swim lessons and things like that. But it doesn't fall under our purview and gives us a little bit more leeway.
And the Frogger got some of that community involvement money to renew their arena. And we go to Frogger, love to Frogger again, four days a year. It does something, it's kind of like the Fairgrounds. It's a meaningful part of the community, but it's very little utilized.
Well, Fairgrounds is utilized, one of you might think, but still, but still, yeah.
But if the Frogger ground. But if the Frogger Grounds had an amphitheater and a pool, and they're getting that money from, not a bond, but from its, it was government money, I don't know where it's at.
Take it to the city.
Grant money.
Yeah.
So if the grant money could take, here we own this property now, the Frogger only ended up owning eight acres or whatever it is, but we own this, if we could build a community this, a community this, a community baseball field.
You see, they've got the baseball fields out there, they've got those out there.
Yeah.
But the other part of that, then, the longer term is, I can build it and put it in there, but then what do I have to be able to maintain over time and to operate it? So right now, for the pool on the school district, we're hiring staff. So, I mean, we've got all the.
A city of a little, or a county.
It really is about, I believe from our past bonds and information, people want to support what is going to support our students.
Right.
And so the farther we get away from items in the bond that aren't a direct and significant impact to our students, they are less likely to be funded.
Right.
The other thing is, we would love it if we could go out to the community and say, gee, we'd like to build a new elementary school, and a new, and a Wingland Clemmons Primary School, and a new middle school. We know that that's, we're nine times out of 10, sure, that's not going to be supported from a financial perspective, because people's taxes would go up so great. And so that's the other thing that we've got to be able to finesse away with our community, is what are you willing to pay?
And whether are you able?
And what are you able to pay? And that helps us make our determinations about to what level and what can we do within that.
Obviously, it's not a decision that we would be making anytime soon, and it's not going to probably be the most popular decision. But when it does come time for that bond, I do think it is time for us to say, we are decommissioning this pool, and maybe we recommend that we put more CTE in at the high school in that same spot, or something that will be appealing to help offset the cost of decommissioning the pool in people's minds, because we can say.
How is a pool decommissioned?
I don't know, but there's a lot of steps and it's expensive, so, I mean, I.
I think like.
My meaning would be, can we put the decommissioning in the bond?
Yes, that's what I think, do it once.
Because, I mean, we talked about, I mean, instead of renovating and rebuilding, you know, do the decommission process. And I don't know what all the steps are, but, you know, we had talked about, do we just empty the pool? Nope, you can't empty the pool.
No, they pop out of the ground.
It literally will pop out of the ground.
And so, you know, it's kind of like then.
I think Joey had said it somewhere on the scale of some, like approaching a million dollars to decommission the pool.
I don't even know where the pool is. Is it part of the high school?
It's in the back of the high school.
But is it in the high school or separate building?
Yeah, it's in the door.
So it's just not as own building.
We could probably walk over and look at it if that is needed.
Okay. It's directly connected to that.
And all of the plumbing is connected, and all of the electric is connected. That's why it's so expensive.
And it's old enough, there's likely asbestos and stuff in the pool, it's manufactured process itself.
Probably not.
We did a lot of asbestos abatement when we did the 2012, when the remodeling.
I was thinking old fiberglass.
I would think more of the insulation and stuff.
All right, well, I do think we should probably move along to the board liaison information.
So one thing could be asked of Joey for this, would be a ranking of necessity, is this ranked in necessity?
No, he just put it together.
So if he could rank this a necessity for us?
Priorities.
Priority.
And that's what Jennifer and I are working with him on, to be able to say.
Per school, per priority, that, so as we are looking through some of this, we can.
Yep. Perfect. I brought back the liaison role, because one of the things Rick had said that he didn't want to, because he wasn't running for the board again, be a part of the PEA licensed staff negotiations. If you look at this document, which you've seen a couple of times before, but look at the reverse side, look at that, school liaison, community liaison.
Thank you.
What is the purpose, what are the responsibilities, and what to be careful to avoid? And I'm hopeful that that will help with the questions of what does it mean to be a school liaison? What does it mean to be a committee liaison?
Good.
All right, good.
So helpful, yeah. I did notice the technology advisory committee on here is Blaine. So that is one we should maybe discuss this evening, as well as that spot number two.
Yeah, that would be one that would be, you know, if we've got somebody that's working with the special ed advisory committee, our equity committee, there's just a couple of things, and if we're talking about safety committees, technology is that other big F. And, you know, we could always look at, is there a community member that we would like to attach to a techno? I mean, we can attach, the board can choose to attach community members of interest into some of these roles. But I put it in there because I really, I don't want it neglected.
And when we're talking technology, we're talking about electronic technology, not.
Computers.
Yes.
Phone system.
And Joe, we're not going to put you on the spot to announce whether or not you're running again, but that was.
Oh, yeah, I heard, I looked at Brad's article after, because I believe really from the meeting, and I guess Rick made an announcement there that he's not running again, and I've already told people, and I told you like at the graduation last year, that I, you know, I am not going to be running again, so.
Is your term up?
My term is up, yes.
Yeah, with Rick myself.
All three, okay.
Yeah, but I plan to run again, so with the assumption I'm reelected.
Because I don't, I would rather not be on the PEA negotiations, but I can be, it's just I'll be the end of June, so.
Yeah, and the likelihood of us being completely done by June, while that is absolutely 100% the goal.
Yes.
Not 100% likely to happen, so it would be fantastic if one of you.
I don't believe I am capable of either time commitment or even understanding and doing that sort of stuff. I'm more of, I understand the technical part, the safety part, but I don't think I would do well for the school or anybody in that position.
Ultimately, you'd learn, if you want, one thing I would recommend for you maybe would be, because generally, to be honest, like when I was on the OSBA negotiations last year, I may have made a few comments and a few suggestions, but for the most part, I just was there for moral support. I didn't really do much.
Yeah, the PEA negotiation's a little more involved.
Yeah, for sure, but yeah, so you know, starting with the classified, you're certainly footbatted. Really, you're not going to, it's not going to, it's not, it's not.
Are we required to have two board members on the negotiating committee?
Because Susan.
No, we're not required.
Susan and Michelle and Jennifer.
So if for some reason we could, it would be a.
Yeah, and it's, but it's, I mean, it's nice just because you've got two boards here, but, yeah. We've asked, and it's going to get put forward to the UNISERV representation to say, we would like to have three administrators there.
Okay.
Because we want to grow the knowledge and understanding. And so typically, we've had two administrators with me, and they are going to, PEA is going to raise the question about, can we have another administrator in that group? Because we're not bound by a quorum or anything like that, so that we can grow the knowledge base and understanding of our admin team, so we have greater knowledge. And so I should hear about that with the next couple of weeks, but no, we don't have to.
Also, which would be helpful, okay. Well, we don't have to decide tonight on this, so we won't start for another couple of months.
June would be my last time I could help with that with anything, since I'm not going to be running again, so.
Well, and much like we thanked Rick for his service, thank you, and we'll thank you officially at the end of the year.
Whatever.
So you add your four years here to your 32-plus years of teaching, 35?
Well, if you're substituting 36, plus that-ish.
You know, just a little bit of service to students in our community.
Aaron, I would be interested in having you fill me in on what's involved with the negotiations, with the understanding that my life is sort of.
Yes.
Up in the air. So with that in mind.
We can definitely meet, and I can.
Okay. Or even talk on the phone.
Show you last year's, or not last year, but last round's notes, I believe. Know where those are in my boxes from the move, and we can talk through the process. And it's a lot of being detail oriented, we'll say. It's like, that's your number one helpful, and you are very good at that, so.
Yeah, I guess I'll want to know from you too, like, just an idea of the time investment.
It's about a meeting a week for a couple of hours.
In person?
In person. For the whole time?
The whole.
Yeah, and to be honest, I mean, when you're in negotiations, whether it be OSBA or PEA, most of the time, you just sit there quietly and listen. There's not a whole lot of input that the board members, or even the administrators, except for Susan, really. Mostly, we just sit there, and we're there for support. If there is a question, and we can answer it, great, but more than often than not, it's when we break up and go into, you know, into our separate, separate caucus time, then we talk and discuss.
Come up with creative solutions if we can.
It's.
Yeah, I can, I'll send you an email.
It's a bit of a time commitment, but it's not that hard, really. Because Susan, Susan and Jennifer, Ryan shared the work.
It's just I don't know my time availability.
Sure.
I would say, just knowing how much time it was last time, I would hesitate to ask you to do it with what you have going on. Just.
But I still might want to know more of the process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, or the other piece of it would be that if you chose to be a part of that, that the knowledge upfront, that you may be there sometimes and you may not be there sometimes. You know, we've had people who have said, I got to work tonight, or I can't be there today. And, you know, I think the thing is just knowing upfront, so that we can work it out.
We want to make sure at least one board member at each meeting, but, I mean, ideally, we want to, but we don't have to.
Yeah, because ultimately, the board is the approver.
Right.
And so it's just nice to be able to have people there.
But it all comes back to the board before there's ever any other things, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, we'll talk.
Yeah, and as far as the technology advisory committee, I mean, that is one of my areas of interest, so if that was something that would make sense, I'm happy to go to that if nobody else wants to.
And again, I can help with any of these things, but for long term, it's probably better if somebody else does it. But, you know, I'm happy to help.
You have two of me technology wizards. So do they need to be advised? I'm wondering what they could be, are they going to tell us?
We already have an advisory committee that is made up of, actually, the people that attend consistently are Mark Neville and Josh Martin, so the two lead folks in the tech shop, Rachel Baker, who is our library media specialist that's melded with technology, and teacher representation from different schools. And so they are engaged consistently in conversations about, you know, what are the technology needs? You know, you may have remembered from, you know, our last board meeting, when I think it was Nicole who said, we're doing fine, and then she looked at me and she said, you have to understand that fine means that we're making our way, but we really need technology for teachers, which I get, I, you know, and that is indeed true. And so it's how do we help facilitate and make decisions, not in a vacuum? And if the purpose of being a part of a school, being a school liaison or being a committee liaison, are really to be able to kind of understand the lay of the land across the district, it's really kind of listening for two things like, you know, yeah, they got it nailed, they're working well together, or I have this other idea, have you ever thought of? Or, my golly, these people don't get it. I mean, you know, it just, it's, what it is, is it's just a lens into kind of all the corners of the district.
My guess, now that I think about this, like, so where I would understand things would be facilities. So if I met with Joey, I would represent Joey's list, whatever it is. Like, if I take this list and I call Joey up and said, okay, let's go, let's meet, and let's go through this, then I come back to the board meeting as we're discussing what we need to do, and I'm representing Joey. So that's how I understand it. So I'd be representing, so that way, instead of Joey coming to present everybody in 10 minutes in the board meeting, I spend three hours with him, where he can really show me what he needs, and I understand. So now I understand that now, so if somebody's on the technology, even though we.
You don't have to know a lot about.
You don't have to understand the technology, you understand what it is technology needs.
Yeah.
And it's going to be long range planning, much like facilities.
So, yeah, so I understand that a lot better now.
Personal, immediate, and the long range.
Yep. Cool.
All right.
So, yeah, so we're still, but otherwise, is everybody okay with their other, the assignments that we've already talked about?
Yep. More, most importantly tonight, I wanted to make sure I honored the, what's the first?
And this is very helpful, I really appreciate you taking the time for that.
Aaron and Michelle, do we have another policy committee meeting planned yet?
No.
No.
We have some recommendations to go through still, right?
No, you didn't. What a great kind of.
And there was another release.
Down the way of everybody.
Oh, there was another release.
Oh.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah, so we'll get that scheduled sometime soon.
It's probably going to be in February.
Okay.
I'm gone from the 2nd through the 12th, so it would have to be outside of that range.
Okay. And then moving on to board goals, with the first item being the Board Self-Assessment Action Plan Report.
And I just thought I'd go through the handouts, and then give us the opportunity to make the determination about where do we go? And where would you like to focus time? Because the purpose was really about being able to move forward in, now that we've done the board self-evaluation, what are the board's goals? So the first page, the first report I put in there was the report that came back from Vince Adams about the action plan report. And so it says in here, for instance, the three-month horizon approved superintendent goals and evaluation calendar, identify a consultant to facilitate strategic planning, if we choose to do that, and I have some information I'll share there. Start long-range facilities process, OSBA conference is done, the regional roadshow's done, add work sessions, there's planned special meetings, and so it's really about, if we want to stay on target with this, what is it we need to do? So that was why I brought that forward. The next sheets, the next two are the standards that we evaluated ourselves against as a board. So I just put those in there for reference, that's all. The third set that I put in there says, follow the school district's strategic direction and planning process. This couple of pages, there's a front and back and one more page, is the proposal I got back from Vince Adams if we want OSBA to help us with strategic planning processes. When you look at the bottom of that last page, under costs, it says a 10% contingency is built into the total, bringing the not to exceed value to $7,400 unless the district provides prior approval. So we know if we went with OSBA to be able to help us with a strategic planning process, that that would be the cost and what we would get from them.
What was that cost, the other one, a hundred thousand?
Oh, yeah, it was huge.
It was.
So, I don't know.
And it was a multi-year project, I guess, too, so.
So we have been talking about this since I met with you, and Joe was on Zoom already there in our office. It's been pushing a year.
Yep.
We haven't done anything. I mean, we haven't made progress in starting a plan. We've talked about, and this number.
We, no, sorry, go ahead.
Well, the number of 7,400, to me, seems like pennies to get somebody, get the action moving.
Yep.
To me, we've been kicking this thing down the road, you've got more information, which is great, but you just got the information that's $90,000 less. So how can we say, can we just say, let's move forward?
And that's what I wanted to bring forward tonight.
Can we do that in this meeting?
Yeah, yeah, we are, this is a formal board meeting.
So without even reading this, I like how Vince works with us, and I like how, I relate to him, I can understand him. I would say, with, let me glance what he's, well.
And of course, the timeline would be adjusted a little.
I was going to say that, too.
But I would, for a cap of $7,400 not to exceed, I can't see the district, this group, everybody has a job, we need a specialist to help guide the ship. I am fully in favor of spending $7,400, and if, how we could make that motion of whether it's this project or starting to talk with Vince, but I would move that we accept this and work with Vince at not to exceed the $7,400, and let's get this action plan, because if we back up to our three-month goal, it's been three months since we talked to Vince, and our three-month goal was to identify a consultant to facilitate a strategic plan.
We're hitting our goal right now.
I got this just before the break, so.
I move that we do that thing, and we work with Vince and get this process started.
Would we be working with Vince directly?
He has alluded to the fact that because he's close, he would like to, but I don't know what say he has in that determination.
Okay.
And I can always, I mean, we can always look to, if the board, I'm out of etiquette here. We probably ought to have a second before we have the conversation.
Oh, sure, to discuss.
So that, was that an official motion? So that, was that an official motion?
Yeah, I move that we do this plan, whatever is this, we're working with Vince. If this needs to be updated, the timeline, but we work with OSBA on it not to exceed the $7,400 and to get this ball moving faster.
Okay, and I'll stick to that. All right, it's been moved and seconded, now for discussion.
Yeah, I don't mind, I'm good with that. And I think we can reach out and if it, if it, if it can't be Vince, and Vince is somebody that we want, before we sign any kind of agreement, we can make that determination. But that doesn't stop us, if the board approves this as a vote, to move forward in being able to try and engage in an agreement. And then if we decide that it's not an agreement we want, the other thing I know of is I have some superintendent and former superintendent friends who, this is some of what they do, is strategic planning, that would probably be a comparable cost if we wanted to engage with one of them to be able to help us facilitate the process. I think OSBA has got some good background that gives us, it gives us just a depth and breadth of information, but there are other options if we chose to go down that, that's all I wanted to say.
And as I said, what I appreciate about Vince is he's easy to work with, talk to. If we are engaging in public, he dumbs it down to a level I understand, which the community, a lot of the big terms and things that get thrown out in abbreviations are gonna be somewhat useless in community engagement, because you're gonna spend too much time trying to explain what it is. Vince does a very good job of, so I would like in my motion that we can work with Vince. If not, then we want to see who we're working with.
Yep.
Because I like the Vince, not, it's not the OSBA, I like Vince's ability to communicate and relay information.
So show interest with him being requested.
I have one to two questions. Actually, three questions. Are we required to do any sort of RFP process for this? Or because we already have a contract with OSBA, we're, we don't have to get any sort of bids or?
No, our amount is low enough that we do not have to go through a bid process.
That's a huge relief. Second, having a district-wide leadership team under this second paragraph here. A group of district staff invited to work alongside the board to guide this effort. From a budget standpoint, and Jennifer's not gonna answer that, would this be something that we could offer as compensatable? Because this could, thank you, this could potentially be a lot of work. I don't know that it will be, but it could be. So maybe that's something we could just look at, not necessarily something we have to know right now or that we're offering officially, but just an investigation into, it could be a very small one-time.
There's a couple of things that we would want to look at in terms of a group of district staff. Who is that group? And versus who do we, who does that group provide information to that then gets input and then brings it back? And so what, what can happen during work time and what can't? And so I mean, I'm gonna never say never. I just have to really be, I want to really be thoughtful about where we offer stipended opportunities and where we don't.
Because this is clearly a very finite amount of time, very specific, one-time special project. That's the only reason I would bring it up.
No, and that's why I say I never say never.
Along with that question, do we have the money and the budget to do this in the first place? Which I believe we do in the first place.
Jennifer and I talked about this. And in fact, this morning, we talked about this. And it was really about taking a look at what the expense would be and the same sort of a thing that you raised that said, can we afford not to do something like this?
This number, to me, we can't afford not to, because if you go, one decision that you undo a year later could be anything small on the $25,000 thing, then we're at $7,400. I really think we need to have the.
Yeah, so I mean, that was, we talked about that this morning. And, you know, really, in looking at kind of where we are in terms of our district level, where we are and where we're not in terms of our district level staffing and all kinds of things like that, that if we want to kick this off the ground, that we're gonna need the help to be able to do it.
Okay, I also think the timing of this is beautiful, considering that we are talking about in five years going for a bond, more than likely. So how can we redefine your plan that dovetails into the bond?
At that point, well, because we don't want to get people accustomed to nothing.
And I would echo Erin saying, I really think, as a community member, we were talking about that thing at a Forbes event yesterday, fundraising letter, I want to know what they're fundraising for. If I get a letter in the mail that's just a blanket, I will never respond. But if you have some community engagement and people feel like they have input in it, and here comes a bond, I, as a taxpayer, I would be willing to vote for something I was, I had a decision and the opportunity to be involved in what they're asking.
Absolutely agree, absolutely, wholeheartedly.
I think if we start this now, the realist, reality is we're in '25.
Yep.
If we start this now, maybe in the fall of '25, there's some community engagement. It's really '26.
Yep.
So that gives you not that much time until '29, when you're asking for something to be.
Yep.
So I agree with Erin, the timing of this is, I don't think we should wait.
I agree.
Perfect, and I can get in touch with him tomorrow.
Is there?
We need to vote still.
I was gonna say, is there any further discussion, or did you have to go? Okay, so then on the matter of engaging with OSBA for the Valoma School District Strategic Direction and Planning Process, I, all those in favor?
All right.
For, oh, who's not? So passes with one absent.
Well, we're on strategic plan, I've been thinking about something Susan said the other night, that when she, in our plan, we need to be prepared that the next superintendent is gonna be more money. So after you mentioned that, and you mentioned that a year ago when we started talking about this, I'm trying to think how to, we want to start putting that money aside right now, so that we're not, but not necessarily aside. It could be one-time projects that need to be done, that whatever it is, let's say this number hypothetically, is $25,000 a year it's gonna cost for the next superintendent. And whenever, if it's four years from now you retire, if we could start in the next, as we start working with the budgeting committee, if we start taking $25,000 now and putting it towards a one-time project so that that's already built into the budget, when the next time the superintendent's replaced, you're not looking for the money. We've already put it in the budget and it went to a, something different, but it's not in the annual operating cost.
And I have some information that I want to share with board members that if we have an executive session in February that we can discuss, that's got some comparative information and some of this.
And I would advocate for, if we are going to start budgeting for an increased salary for a superintendent, that we increase the salary of our superintendent to offset that planning, rather than taking on a special project. Because Susan is knowingly underpaid and willing to be underpaid, I am not willing to underpay her. That's my perspective on that. Okay, we've gotten quite a bit done, so.
Yeah, the other documents, I start, I took a stab at a look at some Valoma School District goals that we had put in our last integrated guidance plan, just as a look and feel, to be able to have something be a little bit different. And with the work of OSBA helping us out, that becomes kind of less important in the deck. The last thing that you've got, which is the legal-sized piece of paper.
Before you move on to Susan with this page, as you work with your other administrators, the, the mission has always bothered me, because it's, to me, it seems like restrictive. We're giving somebody three options. So just as, as you think about that, as we do a strategic plan, we looked at all those examples that, was that Vince that brought us those?
No, I didn't.
No, it's you.
Yes.
But just, I, I, it just sounds so restrictive to me. So as you're just talking with the other administrators, whether we agree, whether we vote to change it or not, I'm just, would like some input of other administrators.
Okay, in my mind, what else would you add?
So to me, when you say graduate every student, transition them into job trainer college, you're saying those are your three options in life. You have to graduate, you go to a job trainer college. Now, granted, that's, it just sounds, it sounds like you have three options. You leave this school, you have three options. I really like, we graduate every student prepared for life, something like that, where I just don't like.
There was something about being a good citizen of the world, or something like that, that we all resonated with.
Sandy, or.
Or Santia?
One of those schools that we all like.
Right, right, right.
But I could have taken a look at that, too.
But just when I, every time I read this other thing, I'm going, well, we're only giving people three directions to go. And I, and we all know that life has many directions. And to me, it's just, you know, if you're prepared for life. Yeah, it just feels restrictive, and you read this to me, it just feels like, that's how I read it.
I'm looking at the very core of all of us, once we get beyond high school, it's one of those three things.
It is, to me, it just sounds.
But it doesn't have, there are a lot of people who finish school and a career path is not a likely outcome for them.
Oh, sure.
And they're also the people that get overlooked a lot, these types of programs.
Career path and a job, I mean, everybody today, if they want to survive, has to have some sort of job.
But not everybody can.
For me, for example, I didn't, I didn't go to a job trainer college, I worked for myself right out of, I mean, I did attend WCC and finished, but I already had a job working for myself, so it's not a job to me, it's a lifestyle.
Right.
So to me, I don't, okay, so to me, I don't have a job. I have.
A business.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a job, I don't go to work, I go to work, but I don't coffee it.
Well, and a job is that it insinuates that you're working for somebody else.
Yeah, so anyway, just, just put that out there.
And then you have to be slicing and dicing words and think of it.
I can see a little bit, yeah, thank you.
All right, the last thing I put together, and again, if we're having, you know, it was about the board goals. And I stole this? I will admit it, I could. And so what I looked at, and this was based on an OSBA, I'll call it a white paper, for lack of anything else to call it, that's kind of their vetted research, this is our best guess about some information. And so they talk about components of collaborative governance. And they put up there on the top, you know, unified leadership, effective partnerships, so on, all the way across. And then I put down below that what it looks like. That it just, it's kind of like, if you're looking at unified leadership, what that means in terms of their information is that vision and goals are clearly communicated, board and superintendent work together to lead district toward achieving the vision. And so that runs all the way across to be able to say, what do those components of collaborative governance look like? Below that was the alignment to characteristics of high-performing boards. So with the information that Vince shared with us, the eight characteristics of high-performing boards, they're lined up here. So if you're talking about unified leadership, you're talking about a commitment to a vision of high expectations for all students, as well as clear goals toward the vision, so on and so forth, all the way across. The next thing we took was the school board self-assessment standards, so the work we did on the self-assessment. Where are all 12 of those standards represented? And then I put in where I thought my goals fit in terms of each of those areas, to then be able to say, so if we know what collaborative governance looks like, and we want to be a high-performing board, and we've looked at the assessment standards, and this is what we've agreed that our superintendent is gonna be responsible for, and it's not the only things that I'm responsible for, then what are the school board goals that then align? And so I didn't know if this would be a helpful or not way to be able to say, if we want to look at what our board goals are, knowing that we're really about policy and about budgets and not about the day-to-day operations. And so you'll see in places here, under unified leadership, or excuse me, wrong one, wrong one. Under effective partnerships and under culture of trust and respect for collective responsibility, that's got the same goal for me, providing a safe and welcoming and respectful, rigorous learning environment for every member of the school community. So it doesn't mean that we have to have seven different board goals. But it's kind of like, what crosses over, or even if we can't compartmentalize it, what is most important to us in terms of being able to establish goals that support that whole? The biggest one for me, really, if you ask me my top two, it's really shared focus on student learning and the culture of trust and respect for collective responsibility. So, you know, if we're talking about shared focus on student learning, intentional focus on the success for all students, what is the board goal that then helps support what I do, what, what teachers do, what staff does, to get us to that place of being able to look at that shared focus? So like I said, I, it was just a stab at being able to say, does this help with a picture or not? But it was kind of throwing it out there as a tool to be able to say, does this help? And, or, and/or do we have ideas of things that, without looking at this, we'd say, we really need, we really want a board goal to reflect law.
Without thinking too much about it, the last column there, yours could drop right down into ours. I mean, the collective council, supporting, facilitating completion of the strategic plan, which is what we've been talking about. And that could just drop straight down into board goals.
Yep.
Those, you know.
The two things you said, you shared focus on student learning and a cultural trust. To me, when you ask what the board can do, I think that the board, not the board, I still have trouble with the backing you got from like legal counsel stuff, but your job is, you, your focus should be with student learning and your staff. I feel that the board slash your legal counsel slash whatever needs to have more support for you. So, because your background, your knowledge, your experience is on dealing with education, not dealing with the threads or the other things. To me, that is, that is something that should be more outside of your hands. I know that's part of your job, but you should have backing. Everything, person should be backed by some, more knowledgeable. Your knowledge should be, and your, your job to me as superintendent is to operate the schools, not security guards, not bouncing, not stuff like that. So when you ask what the board, that's what I think about what you need, is you need somebody behind you, not necessarily the board members, but the board saying you have this behind you to deal with. So that's what comes to mind as a board goal for me, is that you need, I guess I was disappointed in the level of legal backing you had during that. I don't know how you feel, that's how I felt about it.
See, and I feel supported by our legal counsel, I do. And it's just, it's, and it's, we don't hire them on retainer, so we don't have them just to be able to answer at will everything we've got. But boy, I ask them a lot of questions. And, and some of it is the way that education and its funky little smile works to be able to do that. And so it's just a question of when do we ask and when do we not ask? And the couple of other things that we're getting into more, especially in the area of special education, is some of these law firms set up monthly, I'll call them Q and As or topic-based.
Almost like a podcast or something.
Something like that, that, that provide a little bit, more of a breadth of knowledge that help us before we ever get to problems. But, yeah.
And I guess I would re-ask this, you, you asked what the board goals are. And as Vince has helped share the job of the school board, is hire superintendent, approve a budget and approve curriculum. So once the superintendent is hired, the, I would, the question to me is not what the board goals for the superintendent is, what do you need from the board? Because as a board, we hire a superintendent. Now, you, you were hired before, at least we were in board, but.
It's a little higher and support.
Yes, so, so once you're, the superintendent is hired, then to me, the question is what does the superintendent need from the board? Not what's the, not what does the board need from the superintendent? That make sense?
Yeah, I know what you're saying, it goes both ways. You know, the board goals, to me, kind of echoing part of this, is that our hands are tied in so many areas. Again, you know, finances, hiring the superintendent and policy. Um, again, you know, finances, hiring the superintendent and policy.
For, and, and for me, I would say that if you ask me to just do kind of a quick, quick cut. Um, I would say that it is, it is important to me that there is a board that has a belief in all students. Um, it's important to me that the board is committed to approving policies.
That supports students.
That support all students and support the work of the superintendent, support the work of the schools. And that, um, the board is committed to directing funding to the places that matter most for students. So the conversation we had earlier about the swimming pool.
Right.
Um, the conversation that I have continuously about.
You're saying about logic.
About logic, about preschool.
Right.
You know, we don't get money from the state for preschool kids. Do I believe preschool is important, you bet your bottom dollar I believe it's important. But it's kind of like, how do we continue to weigh that? Um, in terms of, of what matters the most? And so really, it's about the decisions that you have, um, the power and the authority to make. That's where I want those decisions to truly be in support of, you know, what we've got, what we've got going here. I mean, those would be kind of my three just.
And I feel like we're there, do you feel like we're there?
Uh, yeah, and it's just, it's, it's kind of like, how do, uh, it's not up to me to set the board's goals, but since you asked my opinion.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, you know, that's what I would throw out there to be able to say, um, that the other piece of this is going to be. Uh, and it falls kind of under funding too, but it's, um, it, um, the fourth piece, if I had to add another one in would be. Um, how can we help support community knowledge and engagement? But really, that's, um, that for me, um, are those for me are, are huge. Um, in terms of being able to say, every policy that gets looked at is going to be looked at under the lenses of what matters here. Um, does it, does it do a safe and respectful culture that acknowledges everybody? Is it learner focused, is it, I mean, just, um, how we do those things? And, and really for me, the goals are saying, just what are we committed to, um, to be able to do that?
And on policy, Erin, I guess this is a question for you, cause you love policy, which I'm glad.
Me too.
I hate policy and rule, I don't follow rules, I don't follow law, in terms of, I mean, I just.
Yes, you do.
But do we truly, when we vote to adopt a policy, once it comes to a school board meeting from the policies from O S B A or something? We don't get a choice in them, they're already set, we have to follow the O S B A policy.
Usually, we can make some adjustments, but the, the, a lot of them are, that are because the state requires them. They put in a law that says you have to do this.
And that's what I understand the policies are.
But we tailor quite a bit of the language in our policy committee before it comes to the board.
The O S B A stuff that they give us are, this is suggested, but we can change some.
That's what I care, cause if the state policy says you have to do this, we have to vote to accept it. But at that point, we can't change it, so.
We can change it in a meeting, if there's something that comes up that you are very concerned about. The parts that we can't change are the parts that exactly are related to an O A R, an administrative role or a law change.
There is a level, if a state policy says this, an individual district can adjust it?
As long as we're within the law.
As long as we're within the law.
Okay.
And we can also add policies that don't come to us through O S B A.
And I would never want to be a policy committee, so I'm glad you are, but I'm just was curious, cause we always vote on these policies.
It's one of the most important roles of the board is policy.
Because policies help keep us from being sued. So they can have a lot of financial repercussions if we don't have the right policies.
I just didn't know for sure that by the time we vote on them, we're just, we get them, there's changes done and we ask, normally ask Erin what, or, ask Erin what.
But that's where we have our policy committee meetings for, cause Michelle and Susan and Erin and I, there's, usually they've already been adjusted by Susan or Michelle. But, but we'll talk about it, talk it through and say, well, maybe we should change this to this because our district is in a unique position or whatever.
Yeah, and get advisement from nurses or from the technology. Like, a lot of, uh, people who aren't present in the board meetings have looked at, reviewed and, and given us feedback on policies.
Gets to us, we, I, I, I do not read the hundred pages of the policy, I, I can't, I just lose, I can't remember what I read. So I look at the lines that are crossed out.
That's what we're for, we, we read them for you.
Which I appreciate, cause I will never be able to, I can't do it. So I just didn't know.
Would an audio version work for you, genuinely?
Well, no.
He's not going too much.
Yeah, no, because I just.
I'm just wondering, like.
No, that's the legitimate question.
I truly don't have interest in policy, so I just, uh, if I'm listening to it, I'm off doing something else in my head, cause I'm not interested in it. But if I engage in a conversation with Joey, I would fully understand the facility talks or number talks. But policy, I, I would, my mind would just shut off, I would not, if I tried to listen to it, I couldn't tell you. You couldn't shut, if I was on the table and you pressed stop, say, what was the last ten words, I don't have a clue. If it was the last hour, I don't have a clue.
So, so let me give you an example of, of just something. Uh, one of the things that we're going to look at, um, that's not necessarily an O S B A thing, is we're looking to revise our facility use. Um, protocols and procedure and, and billing and requirements and all those other kinds of things. Um, that's going to be something that we know involves Joey big time. Uh, so that may be something as an example that the two of you can engage in a conversation that impacts the policy. From that side of it, that really has to do with something that's specific to, um, a passion of yours.
Yeah, and I could relate to that and be helpful, like, even the last, board meeting last week. I can't tell you what those policies were about, I read, I scanned them, but I can remember in my talk with Joey Thanksgiving break. Or whenever I talked to Joey, he kind of went through things, I can remember that, because I, I relate and understand it.
You don't remember the ice screening at the station?
I do, I do, I remember just looking at Rick going, when Rick is saying he lies, so they stick up pot, he said, there'll be.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so the. The policies definitely pulled together from all of these columns also, I hope. I, I try to keep all of these things in mind when we're reviewing policy. And I think between the policy group, we do a pretty good job. Might not be one person remembering all of them, but between our collective, we, we keep all of these in mind. Um, one of the things that's really important to do from my perspective is similar to this action plan report that we have. As we're writing goals, we need to have action, an action plan supporting those goals as well, so, um.
And that's what you've asked me to do with my own, which is my next step, but I wanted to kind of get us stretched to. Um, are, are we ready to look at this and then move forward or, I mean, it, it was just a way of trying to look at.
Yeah, this is wildly helpful, so.
And do you want us as a group, this is for us to think on, or we also, do we want to as a group try to fill these in or?
I don't think, give us some time to, to ruminate on it, I wouldn't dare.
And that's why it's really, you know, what, what we need want, but I wanted to be able to make sure that we could put things forward. And if you're asking me to say, uh, can you give us some examples or some what ifs or things like that, then I'm happy to do that. Um, in the direction, but, I mean, there's, there's nothing that says, by golly, we gotta have ironclad decisions tonight.
To me, this is something that Vince helps us think, it, as a strategic plan, this all entails, so if. I have a hard time mimicking some of these is great, but if I had to come up with own things. I still don't know that I fully understand what, how we can help. And you just said some of those things, but to me, this is not a person's fault, now this is a group.
Yes.
We need to fill this out together as, with your input, with whoever else is involved in their, you know.
Well, yeah, I, I see us having at least one more work session separate from the normal board meeting before the end of the school year.
Well, one of our goals on our action plan for this meeting, um, is actually to schedule work sessions throughout the rest of this school year.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's the last item on there, um, so that would definitely be a component of it.
In that process, basically, in age of July August, I'm out, I just, we're, we're, I can't. But if, so whatever, whatever we can do.
Ahead of that.
Ahead of that is ideal for me, and especially where Joe and Rick are going to be done end of June.
Yeah.
So we, so we need to.
We could have another work session in June, but, but as of July first, new, new people will be.
But as saying, I can completely relate to, if we try to do some of this stuff at July board meeting. We show up at the board meeting and immediately you're voting, you're voting for a chair and, I mean, we sit down, three minutes later, we're voting for a chair. It's not the right time to be doing any, anything, cause you have nothing to go off of, we should. Unless a person ran for one of their spots that was.
Had been at work.
Or, or sat at one of these meetings every month that really understood. Bringing somebody, we came in off the streets, voted in with some ideas of what we thought was going to happen, and completely different. But trying to make any rational decision with the new, two new people that day is not the time to do any strategic planning or any, any. It's just not.
And you both need to prepare yourselves for the fact that it is an election, so there's no guaranteed outcome of the election.
Correct.
So potentially with three new people.
And the only, the only thing that we.
Senior leaders.
Yes, the only thing that we.
Oh crap.
I know, that's not so different.
Really need at that point in July is to be able to have somebody that will, at least for a short time, even if it's interim. Um, designate, be designated as chair so that we can write checks, we can, you know, we can continue to conduct business.
Right, right, right.
And then, um, you know, if we have to readjust, it would be like somebody saying, I can't be chair anymore. Um, we gotta make a shift, but that's the only reason, or that's the biggest reason. Why somebody needs to be voted into that position at that early meeting in July, so that just we can continue to conduct business, that's all.
And Erin just brought up a good point, it's an election, there's three people.
Right.
Well, I sure hope Erin gets re-elected, cause we need Erin to take over the chair, cause honestly, saying I can't, we don't know enough, we, we just couldn't.
You can, it's just.
You're very skilled and capable people, I believe in you.
But the point is, we need to get this more, as much done.
Sure.
I agree.
In February to April as possible, or even into early May, cause we can't, we can't start. We could start this in July with saying that, and three new people going, crap, we have to do this stuff.
Does this time slot work for everybody? I know you will be here next month, because you're going to be at a town.
Not early February.
Um, but this.
Two weeks from tonight? Joe said not early February.
We're in Disneyland, twenty days to the first.
July, July, I mean, January twenty eighth would be two weeks.
I'm in Disneyland, but you guys can go without me.
Um, oh, no, we'll wait.
It's my wife's birthday, I'll be gone.
Okay. Uh, July thirtieth, you'll be in Disney?
We get back.
No, 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 not July.
I mean, January. Wishful thinking.
You know what I mean.
We are gone the twenty sixth through the thirtieth, so we should be home the thirty first, we should be available, but that's a Friday.
February fourth would be another Tuesday evening, I just don't know if Tuesdays are working for people.
Joe's gonna be gone February, yes, I said through the twelfth.
I'm going the second through the twelfth.
I mean, I read through the bathroom, but otherwise, besides that last week of January, any week, doesn't matter on evenings to me. Week, February, I got nothing else going.
The board, the board meeting's the thirteenth, so what about the following Tuesday, so that would be the eighteenth?
I have enough, I mean, eighteenth would be fine with me.
Okay, works for me.
Okay, so I'm going to log into our new board calendar.
Thank you for setting that up, I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but I did see that it exists, and I very much appreciate that.
And I'm gonna.
You got an email.
Check, yeah, check your email.
Okay, okay.
Okay, where was I going to write this down right now?
I'm just gonna send an invitation to you.
Thank you.
February.
School board work session six to eight P M, or six P M to whenever it finishes.
Yes, I'm thirty eight, right around there.
Nine, just to get.
Um.
So, actually, we'll have to leave by eight tonight if we go that long, but.
Sure. So that's February eighteenth, that's six, do we need to set up another one after that?
I would say, at this point, one at a time.
And then we'll be getting in touch with Vince too, to make sure that we're in the, in the ballpark there as well.
Yeah, I do think that the next, the next one could be independent of him if it needs to be, cause I think we really need to set. Our board goals, even if they're just board goals until the end of this school year. Um, and we could just be very explicit and say, these are our short-term goals. Um, and they could, and could and most likely will be focused on the strategic planning process. And how we can continue to support that, but, um, okay, so.
Technically, Tuesday, February eighteenth, okay, that works.
So, a, a request for me is for everybody to do a little bit of homework, I know that that just made your whole body clench, but. Um, just thinking about, um, goals for the board from now until the end of this school year. Uh, because I think this first round of school board goals, it's just going to be short-term. Cause we know that there's going to be a big switch over, we know we're reaching the end of the year. And, uh, with a special focus on, I'm just repeating what I said, the special focus on. Um, how we can ensure the completion of the strategic plan process. Or we won't be done with it by the end of the year, but how we can support that process, cause I think that's going to be. The most important part of our work until the end of the school year. Besides, obviously, negotiations and facilities planning, like those other things, but how we can make all of these.
I know that Al C has just recently started, um, using O S B A to help facilitate their strategic plan.
Oh, fantastic.
So I can reach out to them and kind of see what their general, um. How, how things have generally started.
I'm optimistic, and I'm probably way too optimistic, in the strategic plan is going to also be. Triggering maybe that Parks and Rec or community thing, so as, I'm kind of hoping that's a side thing that happens, because. That can drastically affect the school needs or bond.
Absolutely.
And I had, when Darryl Hedges were still president, before he stepped down to the fore president, we had talked about, they were trying to buy. There were the shop as at Skirbins for community auditorium. So there was a lot of talk of, cause I talked to him about how we were at the elementary school. And at Clemmons, when they do these little plays and stuff, how hard it was to hear and things like that. And so he said one thing that Frawls was looking into is that, he had been talking to Chris Workman and they were trying to, is it Chris Workman? And, and trying to come up with a Parks and Rec district for, and in that, they. It would be an involvement with the school, which would then, that theoretically could be the, a pool, an auditorium, a rec center. That was on that public now owned property, still trying to get some more money to work with the church and get part of that way back. Uh, but I'm hopeful in the strategic planning that brings these community talks together. Because it can greatly, greatly affect either what we're asking for in a bond or some of these long-term visions of the school. Cause having a private, that would, like right now, where the ones we're doing here now are great, we can hear the kids and stuff. But it theoretically disrupts whatever else was happening that night if there was a separate auditorium. Now the school has more freedom for what they're doing.
Has there been a discussion about community theater in Fulham, I mean, you have the Majestic downtown in Corvallis, but if you had something like that.
Well, that was part of the talk I was there about this.
I, I think that anybody that I know of here that's looking at community theater is either connected to the Majestic, the Whiteside or, um, ACT in Albany.
Okay.
But yeah, I'm just hoping this brings some of this community stuff together to.
And that was the reason for that November meeting, to be able to say, cause the other people that got invited to that meeting were. Uh, the Ben Community Foundation and the Fulham Community Foundation, to be able to say, you know, what can we all bring to bear? Um, to be able to, it can work, so yeah, that, I agree with you.
We're having the same discussion in our forest thing last night, as the group that I'm obviously the youngest on the, this community, the forest thing. And the other isn't near retirement age or beyond retirement age.
Yeah, I'm not the youngest anymore anywhere.
And, but the thought is, there's a whole new generation that's not involved and somehow trying to get, because I sat this forest meeting last night. And probably the next youngest one there is Darryl Wilkes, who's probably mid-sixties. Other than that, we're talking seventies, eighties, like Von Starker, we're talking about people that are retired fifteen years ago.
I think it's that way, like the Gringes, the Lions.
But yeah, it's trying to, how to get these groups to get the next generation to have some of them. Cause those are four H two, this community development, and that group is, there's no forest alumni, I'm one of the very few that stayed around and about this program. But when you get that, what's called the original generation out of it, there's nobody left. And so that's where, if you don't revitalize some community thing going in a community, just like the Gringes, the. The every, I mean, I don't even know much about the Elks or the V F Os and stuff like that, but all those things are. That were big in, let's say, the sixties and seventies have just, you know, they're on their last leg.
Yep.
And that was the foundation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's just, I see that happening with communities.
Part of it is because we're raising our kids and taking care of our parents, and because we're talking about our age.
It's true.
And there's just not a lot of bandwidth beyond that.
But then at some point, well, when the parents' age are gone, you, and those people are holding on to the old marriage of the Grange and those things, those things are done.
Yeah.
And then you can't, you don't have to restart them, so where does the next shift turn, I don't know, but trying to get some of these talks going, and some of these older people, I got a meeting last night, like Von, not Von, there was Al Hutchinson. He's one, I work on estate planning now, and there's one of these organizations I want to put money into in my estate planning to try to help do this, which is some of the same thing that Fullness could be doing with their community, like, hey, it's not even, some of this money you could get almost as much as a bond from some, not, I mean, no, you can't, but but big chunks of money can come from estate planning. But if somebody says, you know what, my kids are doing fine, or I don't have kids.
It's like, we get, we get solicitations from us all the time.
Well, you know, it's how we get them to build a first place.
Yep.
Yeah, the Clemmons.
Oh, sure.
The Clemmons said, by golly, we believe
Right.
In supporting students to um learn how to swim, and learn how to invest, I mean, that was awesome.
Yeah.
And and not that I, you know, think it's Thompson, but somebody like Eric Thompson, Starker, Forrest could say, you know what, we need this in the community. And they have the ability to go do it. And and sometimes it's it's just making the desire aware, than aware of the desire on some people like that, that because, yeah, the meeting last night, there's half the people were talking about their retire, estate planning, and what charity, what organizations they want to leave money to to support the next generation.
I mean, it's how we have a cancer center in Corvallis.
Right, right.
It's a stake at cancer.
Well, and the cardiac center.
The cardiac center.
Well, all those buildings, Neville Building, you know, all those buildings.
Um, yeah, yeah, um, a lot of the stuff, you know, that, communities are built on community, right?
Right.
Um, okay, well, I do think you should go to some city council meetings and give some public comment around that, because I think that that would be a very fantastic kickoff.
But I'm also not in the city, so I can go, but I'm not actually-
Oh, because you live out of the city.
I'm in the school district, but I'm not, I'm not part of the city.
Okay.
Right, so.
Oh, I just realized that, I'm not in the city anymore either, that's so weird.
Yeah, you get a vote in the district, but you don't get a voice in the city.
That's weird.
That's-
I do in the fire district.
Yes.
I am in the fire district, thank goodness. But two acres of my land is not.
Weird.
But my whole address is.
It's like, so it's weird around here, it's like, just, I don't go down Chapel, and Jody Mode lives, you know, just south of Chapel, and she has a Corvallis address.
Yeah, that's weird.
That's just weird.
The lines are so wrong.
Well, we did some work on that, what, three years ago?
Do we want to adjourn the meeting and then complete the session?
I was gonna ask you all, uh, so we're good, we have the next session scheduled for February eighteenth.
Sure.
And that session, we are-
We're bringing the the board goals, I think that's gonna be the main focus, I'm sure some other things will come up between now and then.
I'll have information, yeah. I hope I have some information from this.
It would be helpful for us at that point, or Rachel and me, if Vince had a worksheet, like, here's what I need from you guys, or here's what I need you to be thinking on right now.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we are gonna, if Vince is the one that's working with us, having, fill in the blanks from Vince that we discussed as a group, I think would be very beneficial.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
It'll save us some time, it will be more efficient.
I think that brings us to the end, if nobody has anything to add, any other questions? Your requests, your, thanks, because we're not in a main meeting. All right, I'm going to adjourn the meeting now at uh seven forty six P M, all right?
So now that you adjourned us, this, the list from Joey, is it, would it be helpful if I was to meet with him prior to that February? Is there anything about this that we, I can-
Help us in the work session.
Yeah, is there anything that I should try to go and meet with Joey? Because I could take this list, Joey said, let's put this in prior, let's prioritize this by need, and then prioritize it by dog.
Yeah, we're working on, we're working on that with him, to be able to look at the prioritization of need. But we see kind of where Vince is at too.
Okay.
And then where Joey's at in terms of of safety committee meeting and things like that, and maybe we can-